Jermaine.
Here.
Lamore.
Excused.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Ike Wangeli, I received an email that he would be excused.
Very good, and Councilwoman Vining is here as well. So we have our work session, there's one item, and I'll just go right to Mr. Pastu on the presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. The item that we have before us tonight is with Jim Tischler with the Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority and Dave Allen with Kent County Land Bank and NOVA.
InovaLab.
InovaLab, I can't even read my own writing, isn't that terrible? We had met with them probably just before Christmas, talking about an infill development project, residential infill development project that they were involved with in Kent County, and Mr. Tischler formerly worked here, thought, you know, there might be some interest here in the city of Monroe, and so we've put, they've put together a presentation for City Council to consider tonight, and so with, without any further ado, I'm going to have Mr. Tischler come up and initiate the presentation.
Very good, welcome.
Thank you very much, and I think this is the first time in 17 years, I'm about to say, "Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council." It is truly an honor and a pleasure for me to be back in this chamber, and I, all I'm going to say is, there's a lot of memories in the back, I'm going to put them in the back of my mind. And I really appreciate being in front of you all here tonight, and as I've said to a number of the council members and yourself, Mr. Mayor, I am just speechless over this room, and the work that has been done to make this a real room for the people, it's wonderful, so I, kudos to the city and to you as council members. I presently am the Director of Development for the State of Michigan Land Bank Fast Track Authority. As Mr. Pastu mentioned to you, we started to meet with him and Mark Cochran and Jeff Green, your staff, around three or four months ago, and it was in response to the fact that we, the Land Bank, has properties, and you'll see a map in a short while, in the city, and the discussion started to revolve around what to do with those properties. The city staff's interest was to obtain control because, as in past and even present time, there's a strong interest in pursuing redevelopment opportunities. It gave us the opportunity, though, to talk about another approach that we, as the Land Bank, have been engaging with a number of communities across Michigan, and tonight's presentation to you is intended to lay out what could be a proposal for your consideration of working with the Land Bank and InovaLab for development of new construction, single-family or other housing in the city on infill lots. I'll get to that in a minute, well, a few minutes. What I want to do first is to explain for you and for the citizens, what the heck is the Michigan Land Bank, okay? So I have a presentation here, and the first partial, part of it will be focusing on the Land Bank itself. The Land Bank is a state agency, you probably are more familiar with the other agencies in the Department of Talent and Economic Development, that would be the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MISTDA, the State Housing Development Authority. I spent about five and a half years working as the Community Development Director for the state through MISTDA before taking this role at the request of the governor, the former governor, doing development work for the state land bank, and the various agencies that comprise the talent investment apparatus, workforce development, other workforce training programs, those are in TIA, the Talent Investment Agency. Those four agencies comprise TED, hopefully I won't get too deep in acronyms tonight for you, the Department of Talent and Economic Development, and our philosophy is what you see on the right side of this screen, which is this relationship between business and talent and place, and the research identifying the fact that business needs talent, but talent more and more and more are seeking good places, like Monroe, and that those places need to have businesses as well. So this relationship is really circuitous, going in every community and every neighborhood. The state land bank is, operates across the entire state, we have presently just under 3,000 parcels in our inventory. We are, there are also 43 other county land banks. You may be familiar with the Monroe County Land Bank, they, they came into being, I think, about five or six years ago, if I'm not mistaken, and so Monroe County has one, as I said, 43 and counting, counties have land banks and that number is growing. How do land banks, the state or other county land banks, get their properties? Well, it's through one of three major routes. One is through foreclosure, tax foreclosure of properties. Second would be where there is no owner identified, or a grant, or a gift to a local land bank, or third is in transaction either to or from a local unit of government who owns property. Ergo, that sets a relationship, as we've been talking about, between the state land bank and the city of Monroe. We are in effect a real estate development entity. The state land bank, the county land banks as well, but we are very active in doing any and all things that relate to development, redevelopment, and transaction of properties, and all those powers that you might understand or know of as being part of almost a private real estate entity, we have those as well. We only have a couple of prohibitions, we cannot finance a casino, okay, and we also cannot finance a prison project, development project, or another state project which is under the guise of another state agency, okay? What we have been active in over the past decade is utilizing federal grant funds to demolish properties through the program, there are a series of programs which you might collectively know as the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Going back to the Obama administration in the first few years, in response to the Great Recession, quite a few dollars, millions of dollars were put into help states, Michigan included, to identify and obtain and get control of blighted or derelict properties and demolish them. And so we were a sub-grantee for the state of Michigan and the federal government, and in some communities such as Highland Park, Hamtramck, Angster, Pontiac, and other cities across the state, the Land Bank was the direct party which actually took those federal funds and proceeded to engage in acquisition and foreclosure and demolition, to the tune of more than $84 million over that 10-year period of time in 60 communities plus. I know you will not see this, this slide and be able to read it at where you are sitting now, but this in a, one page is our strategic direction, which was established late in the previous administration, and has been supported by the current administration, and what I want to highlight is in that orange box area, is the, the approach, or the change in direction, the additional direction of the state land bank in wanting to work in promoting development and redevelopment, not just being a repository of properties which come through tax foreclosure or through other means to us, but actually proceeding to work to get them developed or redeveloped either ourselves, if they are state-owned, large parcel properties, or with support and in partnership with local communities such as Monroe. These next slides, I'm going to show you some of the properties we have in our inventory which come in either through foreclosure or through the other means. If they look vaguely familiar, not that they're in Monroe, but they look probably like sites that either have been in your community or in other communities, they are really no different than what, what is out there in the, out there in the world. They are sites which had a previous owner and have had issues, whether they're blight or environmental issues, and the owner has either passed away, or they have transferred the property to heirs who have no interest in the property and taxes aren't paid, and they go through foreclosure and the like. This picture is, is a property in Upper Peninsula of property we own, and it's that when I saw this site, it reminded me of one of the first Monroe brownfield projects on Telegraph Road, where, which is now a commercial redevelopment site, it just has those, those characteristics to it. But not all of our properties are brownfields. This unbuilt, or incomplete site and building condominium is in Owasso, Michigan. This project went south during the recession, the property foreclosed, title eventually came back to the state land bank, and we are in process right now of soliciting qualifications for real estate developers to, to finish the build out of this condominium. This property here is in Grand Travers County, it's a, it's a prison site, a former prison site, the former Camp Pugsley Correctional Facility. The state land bank, at request from other state agencies, receives state surplus properties and proceeds to facilitate their development or redevelopment, and this property is now under a development agreement, comprehensive development agreement with a party who is going to put, develop a, a residential panelization plant, here we go, where they construct panels to go into products such as modular housing or even stick-built, single-family housing. Closer to Monroe, this site here, some of you may have a familiarity with it, it was known as the former Detroit House of Corrections site, it's in Plymouth Township on Five Mile Road. This site was operated by the city of Detroit and then obtained by the state of Michigan and was operated by the state in Wayne County for decades as a prison. It contains many of the same issues that this community has seen in its brownfield sites, not just some contamination, but also issues with fill and foundations and buildings that need to be demolished. In this room and in front of this body, I don't think, that's not understood, I think this community has been very proactive in brownfield redevelopment, and because this is a state-owned facility, we have, with support of the administration and the departments begun to engage redevelopment of the state-owned surplus properties that exist like this as This slide isn't supposed to show you, in those little orange dots, I'm sorry for the clarity here, the 10 lots, the 10 parcels that the state land bank owns within the corporate limits of Monroe. Your staff, administration is well aware of those, it was because of this, these properties that we began to engage conversation, and it's my understanding, if I, if I'm correct, that this council passed a resolution to request those properties to be obtained from the state land bank, to which our response was not only to say, yes, we're interested, but we came down, as Mr. Pastu mentioned, back in October, if I'm not mistaken, to talk about not just conveyance of lots, particularly the ones that are not, we call them side lots, they're really not buildable, they likely would not meet your specifications under your zoning or your building regulations, they, they're as narrow as 10 feet wide, they're just, are remnant parcels that exist out there, and we have interest in wanting to convey those to you at your request for, for how you want to deal with them on side lots. But of those 10 parcels, four of them are buildable, and it was with that information that we began to sit, to talk about a proposal, which is in front of you for consideration tonight, which is to, your consideration to work with us, the state land bank, to engage an active infill of those properties. Because we have been, as other communities have requested over the past 18 months, we have been starting to engage, dramatically engage some of those communities in residential infill development, but there are a number of dimensions that need to be brought to this, because in many of our, the markets and communities we're working with, the private market just has not stepped forward to want to acquire these properties and proceed to build them out, whether it be for single-family detached residential, or townhouse, or other small-scale multifamilies, two to four, six units, units that would fit within neighborhood settings, they are called missing middle product in the lexicon of today. And more than that, the cost profile of, of residential construction has really gone, risen to the level where it frankly cannot be, in many respects, purchased unless at custom luxury level by most or many households in the markets, and we suspect, including Monroe, all right? So this differentiation or ability to address not just a luxury market, but workforce housing, probably is a phrase that you might be familiar with, or affordable housing, or some mix between those, those are all potentially on tap with a delivery of a different product, a new product, which we call indoor stick-built. You may have heard of that phrase as modular, but I will be here to tell you, and Dave Allen, who's with me tonight, will get into this in more in-depth, this, this product is not only growing in demand, but in quality control, it exceeds the standards of outdoor stick-built, that's why we call it indoor stick-built as well. So our interest is to, is for your consideration to support your administration working with us, the land bank, on a demonstration pilot on a property in the city, we'll talk more about that in a few moments, but what I want to do is turn the floor over to Dave Allen with the Kent County Land Bank transitioning into the, a corporation to be called, which is called InovaLab, and he'll talk to you more about the product, the products, and what we might propose for the demonstration in Monroe. Dave?
Thanks, appreciate you having me here tonight. I am a former Third Ward City Commissioner in the city of Grand Rapids, so I appreciate your service to the city and the community, and I know what it's like to, on these Monday nights, to have a long night ahead of you, so I'll try to be brief and somewhat interesting. I have a 25-year history in community development, I started a nonprofit housing corporation in urban Grand Rapids called Lighthouse Communities, now it's called Link, and then now since I have been running the Kent County Land Bank Authority for the past seven years. In my career, I've done about 2,000 units of housing, about $85 million of development, all in the urban core and cities, and now, a little bit in out counties, and so I want to start, if I could, with a short, four-minute video, if I can quickly navigate this, there we go, and we'll adjust the sound if it's too loud, I don't want to blow your eardrums out. Sorry, here we go. Why is it not showing?
There's two.
Pardon me?
Did you mirror it or extend the screen?
It showed last time we did it, that's why, Jim, you want to take a look at this real quick? Sorry.
That's PowerPoint.
I'm going to close the PowerPoint, that's what it is. Reduce the, that's what it is. There we go.
You get it?
Yep.
Never mind my appointment calendar, it says Monroe Council Work Session, okay?
Just hit that play and expand it.
There's play, oh, there it is.
... West Michigan, number one is the lack of inventory, number two is the lack of steel trades. InovaLab, we've owned about 25,500 lots, or have been operating the last three years.
Whoa. No, I think we're going to skip the video. It's buffering. I'll try it one more time, if not, we'll skip it, it's not them.
There's two stories that are being told about the real estate market in West Michigan, number one is the lack of inventory, number two is the lack of steel trades. InovaLab, we've owned about 25,500 lots, or have been operating the last three years.
All right, we're going to skip that, we're just going to go with the photos. So as a city commissioner, I was brought forward to a meeting to discuss the terrible housing shortage that we have in the city, and was introduced about a year ago to, to Champion Modular, and, there we go. So having been involved in stick-built and traditional development for 25 years, I was a big skeptic. So last year, in January, a little over a year ago, I went to the, the National Modular Expo and started walking through some of these homes, and I was literally and utterly blown away at the quality, the, the design aesthetic, everything. So we started meeting with Champion, and the first thing that we noticed when we met with them was that all of their product, none of their product would fit in an urban environment, in a city. It was all wide for quarter-acre lots, none of it would fit on a city lot. So what we did, and what Champion did, was for the first six months, we worked with them on a design book, on a set of designs that would fit in any urban neighborhood. So if you have a neighborhood that has Cape Cod's, we have Cape Cod's, if you have a four-square, we have a big tall, and I'll show you some pictures of four-square, if you have ranch homes, we have ranch homes, we have a multifamily all the way from townhouses to 24-unit on small lots. So that was a lot of our work in the beginning, and then we picked some of our lots in Grand Rapids. We've now done 13 modular homes in the city of Grand Rapids. A little bit about, a little bit about, and I'll just go through some pictures here in a second, a little bit about the, the design and the manufacturing of them, they're built on a traditional foundation, we always put an egress window in so the family who buys it could finish the basement later, which adds value to the home. The, the homes themselves, the, the main flooring of the homes is what's called a two-by-10 compressed truss system, which is kind of complicated, but what I want to tell you about that is that is about 10 times more sturdy than what a stick-built home would be. You know how sometimes you walk in a house and it has a little bit of bounce to it? You go in one of our houses, and, and I'm a big guy, put me and three more guys and jump up and down and nothing moves. It's a, it's an amazingly strong, long-lasting system, the exterior walls are two-by-six construction. We've added some design aesthetics to our homes with, you know, higher pitches and bigger overhangs and framing around the windows so they don't look like a traditional modular home, they, they break all those stigmas. This particular home is the home that's featured in the video that I'm not able, not able to show, truly fits in that neighborhood, it's tall, narrow, all the houses in that neighborhood were built around 1925. This particular home was set in four hours, so from start to finish, in four hours, the house was put in place, and then it took about 90 days after that to finish it. So this is just one example of a house that we did. This is another house, this is, that first house I showed you was on the more higher, higher end, it was sold for about $229, this house was just sold for $179, about 1,400, almost 1,500 square foot, three bedrooms, two and a half baths, laundry on the main floor. This is the inside of that previous house, that Sigsby house, beautiful, hard, hard, solid surface flooring, beautiful trim work. The Champion has their own custom cabinet factory, so all the cabinets are made in-house, so they're about four or five times higher than your entry-grade level cabinet that you would find. This is on a cul-de-sac in Grand Rapids where they're all ranch homes, so this is a ranch home, this is the interior of that home with custom cabinets, glass backsplashes, this house was sold for $189,000. And then this is something brand-new that Champion just announced a couple months ago, it's, one of the benefits of working with Champion Home is you have some tremendous buying capabilities, so they partnered with about five different vendors, and this is their new kitchen service that they're, they're offering, these are, that whole back system you see above the stove and the high-end appliances and the sink with the farmhouse sink and all that kind of stuff, that all comes as a package, and just so you know, just to kind of give you a scope of reference here, so you take your entry level, if I wanted to upgrade to that package, it's a $350 upgrade. So I mean, that's the buying power that you get to working with Champion, so we can really provide a home that will fit in any neighborhood, any design aesthetic, any, any level of finishes, any level of trim. This is three houses that we just installed, all right in a row, we have two Cape Cod's and then another one, we call it a four-square. When the houses are dropped on site, the roof is already installed, they lift it up and it's hinged, so, and again, within one day, that whole house is wrapped up and weatherized and then, and then finished after that, so, they're all put in with a crane, so we have been looking with the city staff at this site, which is, refreshment memory on the address?
308 Lavender.
I'm working in so many cities, 308 Lavender, it's, it's a beautiful city lot, we've looked at all the, all the homes around it on that block, and what we've come up with is this particular model here, which is our, we call it our Madison model, it's one of our nicer models with a full porch, most of the houses in that neighborhood have a full porch on it, it would fit very nicely on the lot. Done a little bit of pre-work, I think there's a way to get the crane in the lot, that's always an issue in the, in urban environment, how do you get the crane in? But again, very nice, very nice home, probably would go on the market for around $189, $179 to $189, we're still working on the numbers. If, if we're allowed to go forward with this, with this, this pilot program, we would look to do this and maybe one other house, just to show this council and show all your city departments how this works and how well it works. We would be working with a local general contractor, so we would not be bringing people from the west side of Michigan, they would be people here, we've already been in contact with a local Monroe-based real estate agent, done some market analysis on your market, and believe it or not, you know, we think, not that we want to do this, if the market wants to take over, great, but there's probably room to sell about 15 of these homes a year in your city right now, because of market demand with, with the proper marketing, whether that be on lots we own, whether that be mason-run lots that the city decides they want to work with or whatever, but what we'd really love to do is get the opportunity to, to work with the city to, to show you what that would look like and, and how that would happen on that lot, so. Needless to say, the trees and the fire hydrant caused a little bit of an issue, but I think I have a way around both of those, so neither will be disturbed. I do not want to ever tear down a tree, because I guarantee you, when I show up to tear it down, somebody will be chained to it and tell me, I can't tear that tree down, so I've since learned not to do that, so. With that, I'll turn it back over to Jim and to wrap up, and then we'll see if you have any questions.
Okay, thanks, Dave. I'm going to jump ahead here, just to show you, this, on this slide, this is who we're working with presently. We have simply put them into the categories of communities that are actively working with the state land bank, themselves or with their county land banks, and when I say active, they are in, they have been through site selection, in other words, it's, it's on one of our sites or one of their municipal sites or their county land bank sites or, and multiple sites, and they're now start, we're starting to engage this approach of how we will organize or operationalize the structure. It varies by community, some communities want their county land bank to actually take the lead. Our response to that is, no problem, we'll work, we'll provide support service to the county land bank if they have capacity with that municipality. Some municipalities, Muskegon is in this way too, they want to take the lead themselves, and, but in order to impart qualify for some of the incentives, which we can talk more in Q and A if you want to, it may be advantageous to have the site titled to the land bank, and Muskegon Land Bank has not expressed an interest wanting to have control of its property, so we've agreed that we would, would do that, and so we're working through arrangements with Muskegon to do that. But you can see the number of communities that, either through a single lot or multiple parcels, Dave knows a number of these because the KCLBA is Kent County Land Bank in here as well. Then there are the pipelines, those counties are outstate, mostly upstate, they have as high a need for workforce housing as any community in downstate. The trouble is that their markets are smaller, and so they absolutely cannot attract a market developer to come in if the market demand is not just for 15 lots a year, 15 lots, period, okay? And so what do they do then? That's another area where counties through their land banks are coming to talk with us about setting up programs. And then the possibles, and I, that's a third category, of course, our own site locations, but the possibles are identified only to show you the contact we've had in the past two weeks. As counties have been discovering this and learning about this, either directly or indirectly, the, I used to say, the phone's ringing, no, I'm getting emails saying, "We've heard that you're interested in doing residential, can you come and talk to us?" And so that Dave's on the road, or I'm on the road, and we're going around to, to have these conversations. I'm going to stop there with this presentation to give you, Mr. Mayor and council members a chance, did I miss something?
No, you didn't, I, there was one thing I forgot to add, sorry. We were approached last, early last fall by the Michigan Home Builders Association, by their executive director and their political affairs director, and Josh Brigette from the state land bank and myself actually met with the entire Michigan Home Builder Association leadership team, and they are embracing and encouraging us to, to, to go, go forward and go fast, and the reason is, they as an industry have kind of received a bad mark on their name because builders literally will not build houses at this price point, they're all building in the 350 and up, and so they, but they still want those homes to be built, and there's still a need in the state for these homes to be built. to be built, and there's still a need in the state for these homes to be built. So, I just wanted you to know, this is not something that's just being done in a vacuum, statewide, it's being embraced, and literally, it's just, I shouldn't be blown away, but everywhere I go, from the tip of the U.P. down to Niles, Michigan, from Muskegon Heights here to Monroe, everywhere we go, housing is an issue, and so we really see this as being a need, and the state land bank has partnered with our company now to kind of act as developers, to work in partnership with local units of government and the land bank, to help make these housing developments possible. Because a lot of cities, a lot of municipalities, don't have the development staff dedicated to do this kind of work, or don't have a nonprofit up and running to do that, so we're kind of standing in the gap, that's kind of what our role is, sorry.
With that, Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure, see if the council has any questions right off, looking, I think Andrew does.
Well, the project sounds very positive, I'm very happy that you guys came in to make the presentation, I'm very happy to be a part of it, I guess, what do you need from us?
As I am always direct and straight to the point, I think your support to allow your administration to engage with us, to think through the operationalization of a structured and approach, to go at this demonstration lot, both in terms of its development, and also its marketing and presentation to the community.
I think that sums it up, Jim, that's exactly what the administration would be looking for, is council's blessing to work on this partnership, certainly on a trial basis, and see what the first project or two may lead to, and how we may pursue it further if it's as successful as we anticipate.
Well, I'm certainly happy to provide my support at least to the Michigan Land Bank and our administration on the project. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Michelle?
So, I understand this correctly, you build the home on our lot, and then we turn it, and who gets, who gets what? So I'm clear?
The home was actually built off-site and dropped, and then finished, but we're not actually, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I just want to be real clear on that. We're just the developer, we're just the general contractor, so the lot itself is owned, I believe, by the city, right now?
This lot is, correct.
This lot is owned by the city, so, so I'm, we don't get that, we're not a for-profit developer, we're just setting a lot, so as far as the disposition of that, that's part of the discussion that needs to have with the city about what looks, what happens with that. But I can tell you right now, based on the numbers that I'm looking at, it's so skinny, if there's a hundred dollars to be made, I'll be surprised, there may be a little bit of gap there, but the gap is nowhere near what you'd see with a MISTHA-funded project, where you could have fifty to a hundred thousand dollar subsidy, which I think is not a sustainable program, in my opinion, I'm not trying to be critical of MISTHA, but this is a way, I think, to get housing done without all these deep subsidies.
They look very nice.
So, let me follow up on that, because this is an important point that I think the council should be understanding, or your administration already is, which is, there is a price point that is in this market, we need to learn what that price point is. It could be that the benefit, the financial return to the city Monroe on this lot could be the taxes that come out of payment on this property over time, as opposed to the value of the lot on sale disposition. And the reason I'm saying that is because the cost profile for residential construction today, which is hard, soft, or hard cost, soft cost, fee and profit, that is a problem at price points in the workforce and affordable range. Again, that's, you hear that in the media all the time. That's why the builders, the home builders, are mostly in the 300 or 250 and above range, because that's where they can meet the hard cost, soft cost, fee and profit profile on a property. To make product go at a price point which is where the market is, we'll find out where your market is, it could be that a concession is necessary, where the concession could be the value of the lot, it could be that some other items are subsidized. Any property that the land bank comes into control of would automatically qualify for reimbursement as a redevelopment site, we can talk more about that in more detail, but there's arrangements that could be made. What we think is the best outcome is that you have new product going in your community, which meets the need, the market needs, and purchase or rent point needs, however they may be, for your households and citizens.
Just so you know, we're, our numbers are almost the same everywhere we work, it's about $125 a square foot finished price, so that house that I just showed you would cost us about $175,000 to build, and that means ready for somebody to move in, landscape's done, everything's done, flatwork's done, and so, you know, we're still observing your market, we're still looking at that neighborhood, I think that neighborhood might absorb $179,000, so you can see that, once you have closing costs, there's not much, there's not much margin there, so.
Do you know what percentage of property value increases there have been in the past projects that you've had?
Yes, I do, actually, I'm really glad you brought that up, so, we're, and Jim can attest to this, I'm not just saying this of myself, but when I started as the land bank director in Kent County, I said, "We got to be about development, and then development only." So, we're not going to be, no offense, but we're not going to be Genesee County Land Bank, or Detroit Land Bank, we're sitting on all these thousands of properties, and so we started doing development on our properties from day one. So, about four years in, we hired Michigan State University's Land Policy Institute to do a quantitative study of our work, and what they found is that when a land bank does a project like this, it increases the sales price of all the homes within 500 feet around it by about $8,000, more than what the market would normal bear. So, you could do that math, but the growth is pretty exponential in value around that, so. And the one thing that I say in that video that I wasn't able to show, and I'll email you the video in case you want to send to the council, in case somebody would like to watch it, but, again, going back to my twenty-five-year history, neighbors have been looking at these vacant lots for years, and so the neighbors deserve a house in that neighborhood that fits in the neighborhood, that values that neighborhood, doesn't devalue it, and isn't stigmatized, you know, like you don't want to put some Cracker Box there, you want something that looks really nice, and that's really what we're all about. I would just, you know, say also that, you know, modular is not your grandmother's mobile home, and I can say that because my grandparents lived in mobile homes, so, it's, this is, when it's, again, wish you could have seen it, but the day we installed that house that's in that video, the neighbor left, it wasn't in, he came back at four o'clock, and the house was done, he just went, so, it's pretty interesting.
Other, Jim, go ahead.
I have another point, a little related to that. What you see here, and what our proposal is for Lavender Street, is a detached, single-family home. What my five-plus years of experience at MISTHA, and at that, in that role, financing more than sixty target market analyses across the state, indicates that there is, that there may be just as much, and there likely is as much or more, demand for two-family, or four-family, or small, missing middle product, not on Lavender Street, but in other locations in the city, particularly in corridors, and other local locations. The research has found that there is strong demand for that type of product for a couple reasons. One is, there's not enough product, that's just not there, to meet households or individuals at various stages of their life cycle, and so that's also a request that the land bank has for the city to consider as we look at some of these lots, which is, giving you the opportunity to show your community different housing products, so that choice will come into the market.
Anecdotally, and I want to be cognizant of your time, but anecdotally, we just did a test in Grand Rapids where we put some row houses, some attached row houses, townhouses, kind of a Chicago brownstone look, really hip, urban, really cool, and then next to it, we built a single-family house, and when we put the single-family on the house in the market, the row houses weren't done, we had people say, "I don't want that, I want that", and we never thought that that would happen, but that's really what they wanted, they're attached, single-family homes. And the second thing is, in Midland, Michigan, where we're working, it's not with the land bank, it's a private developer, the city of Midland has asked us to come up with a design, and we're working on it, where when we set the house, there's a grandmother apartment attached to the house. So, when the house gets in, you have a 550 or 600 square foot apartment attached to it, so that provides the homeowner to have a rental income, or some place for a family member to live, but it kind of increases what's able to happen on that lot. I'm not suggesting that that would happen here, but this is the kind of creativity that we're starting to see come about in our partnerships, working with these local units of government, and their planning staff.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? I think back over the last couple of years, at least, if not longer, but more recent, the discussion, as we continue with the Heritage Corridor Plan, and properties that have become available, some that the city has acquired, and some that are still available out there, and I think this is part of the discussion we've had for a short period of time, for sure. And, of course, looking at those parcels on the map, when I saw that, I could identify a few in there that I know that Mr. Cochran and the administration and I have had as the council, like what's going to happen with that lot, or what could happen with that lot. So, this really clarifies a lot of that information of the potential, what that is, because they are individual lots, and where's the appropriate place for an infill, and where's the appropriate place when you talk about a larger development, so I think there's ways to make them both, both those plans or thought processes work, so. Any further questions? None? Mr. Pastu?
Well, in conclusion, getting the sense that council is supportive of us working to come forward with the project on Lavender, but also looking at other alternatives as well, so, we'll get working on that, see what, where we can come back with something very specific here in the near future, so.
Very good. Good decision, Mr. Allen, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, it was a pleasure being here tonight.
Mr. Pastu, anything further on the work session?
Not on the work session.
And so, point, if there's no other comments for the work session, close the work session, and I know that we have a special meeting to start off, that we may or not conclude, but I guess at this point... I don't think, okay. So, at this time, we'll call the city council's special meeting to order, please call the roll.
Any? Do you have any?
Yes.
More?